All right, we'll go ahead and call the city commission meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to post Riverboat Days Monday. So happy to see all your smiling faces here after a very successful event for our community. So with that, Al, roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right, moving on to the approval of minutes of the budget work session from August 9, 2021, and our regular meeting of August 9, 2021. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody in the public want to comment on our minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, motion carries. Moving on to number three on the agenda, I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon for her report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. Just to echo Mayor, some of your comments about Riverboat Days, by all accounts, it was a very successful weekend. My understanding is the attendance was more than was what was expected. No major issues, and lots of great turnout for the parade, fireworks, despite the little shower we had earlier in the day. Great vendors, great art festival, parade, everything from start to finish. Well, there were probably some hiccups, but nobody saw them. So we just thank the Riverboat Days Committee so much for all their hard work and efforts. I was invited to lunch with them on Friday and got a little more of a background look at all that goes into that event. And it is just a labor of love, truly, but a very successful weekend and, I think, much-needed celebration for our community. Also, thank you to the staff that helps in the background to get ready for Riverboat Days, Parks and Rec in particular, and also YPD. So I know everyone's always interested when we have a big event, you know, what types of things that the PD runs into. So I've asked Chief Foot to give us a little overview here of what he saw Riverboat Days weekend.
Overall, it was a great weekend. Friday night, I was down at the park. We did not have any incidents that were of serious nature down there. It was a good night. We had one incident once we went downtown. There was only a few DUIs. Actually, for the whole weekend, I think there was maybe four or five assaults, a lot of traffic stops with a lot of sober drivers, so that's great to see. The highway patrol was in town, and they picked up a few more DUIs of what we had. But overall, I'd say it was a great, safe, fun weekend for everybody. So, great weather and just a good time for everybody.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief Foot? Okay. Riverboat Days is a weekend where we ask all of our officers to work, so they don't get to enjoy it the same way we all do, but we appreciate their help. So we can all have fun. Soon, the commission will be getting updated memo regarding our FEMA floodplain mapping. That's a situation that we've been working on with FEMA for a number of years now, and we're at the point where we've asked for an appeal and successfully regarding the map that the community may be using as we go forward on our floodplain. So that will be updated for you and the public. However, it is a little technical. So we'll be holding our next work session in September with an explanation from Brad Bees, who's our floodplain manager, as well as Dave Mingo, to help us better understand that whole situation and help communicate that to the public. I will likely propose that we start earlier that day than 6 o'clock, probably 5:30. It can get really in-depth really quickly. So please plan for that. We'll set that at our next meeting, just so folks can be prepared for that. And really, that's something that you'll, when we get the, we'll get the memo to you early, you'll probably want to read, digest, and ask some questions of staff even before we get to the, to the work session, which, of course, is open to the public. Later on in your agenda this evening, you have an item that you've already visited before, and that's regarding the Saturday market at the Meridians. There's a few Saturdays left. There was a parking complaint associated with the event, and we learned that we did not have you approve a map, as is in our ordinance. So we have updated that agenda item, and that was pointed out to me. So you've already approved the event, but this is acting on the exact location. So if there are complaints, it's easy for our officers to be able to disseminate where things need to be and where things should not be. On Wednesday, a number of staff and I will be traveling to Mitchell. We'll be meeting with District 3, planning District 3. I hope to learn more about the medical cannabis rules that the Rules Committee of the State Legislature is working on and see how that may impact the policies and ordinance that we put into place for Yankton. We also hope to learn more about our ARP funding and the portal. My understanding is we're getting closer all the time. So hopefully, we're going to learn a little more about that. On Thursday, Mayor Moser and I will travel to Cedar Shores to resort to the First Class Mayor's Meeting that's held twice a year. So we'll be hearing what's happening among other first-class cities and talk with them about their experiences. And I think we have a lot of nice things to say about Yankton here in the last, I guess it's been almost a full year or more since we've met in person. So we're looking forward to getting back together with that group as well. Open swims at the Aquatic Center, at the Huether Family Aquatic Center, have ended for the season, so that's all kind of sad. You can still do some water walking if you'd like to in the morning, and there's still an opportunity for the pooch plunge. I think that's on Tuesday. So if you just need one more swim with your loyal friend, you can bring your, bring your dog to the pooch plunge. But we will be continuing with water walking. And I already saw when I drove to the meeting tonight that they're starting to wind things down. The inner tubes were deflated, and I got a little sad about that. I was like, "Aww, summer. Where did it go?" But it was an awesome, awesome summer with the Aquatic Center as well, and I expect that as we get things wrapped up, we'll have some final numbers for the commission and the public to, to review and, and understand. One more item, I got a question from one of you, so asking for feedback from you on this. Someone has asked if we were interested or were willing to resume our COVID-19 updates. So you'll remember last spring, we were updating folks on vaccinations, number of local hospitalizations, as well as active case numbers. We stopped doing that when we reached our goals and when things tapered off, but as you're aware, things are kind of ramping up again in terms of COVID-19. I have spoke with the hospital. They are willing to give us weekly hospitalization numbers. However, Department of Health is also doing a much better job, we think, of reporting information now on their website better than maybe was last year. So we will do, of course, whatever the commission would like us to do. We would just like to be clear, if you want updates, what information you want and when you want it, so that we're following your direction.
I am the commissioner that requested these updates. I think it's important at this point in time that we all have a collective set of numbers that we're looking at. It's too easy to get numbers from this place or that place, or I saw it in the Argus, or I saw it in the PND, or DOH, or whatever. So I would like for us to be working, observing the same set of numbers. To me, I don't think the vaccination rate necessarily matters at this point. I think we should probably keep track of our case count and keep track of our hospitalizations. That would be my suggestion.
I think for situational awareness, that's a good idea as well. The Omaha and Sioux City hospitals were full over the weekend, and the two major Sioux Falls hospitals were approaching capacity, too. So I just think we're in a situation where we'd need to have awareness.
Yeah, I'd like to have updated numbers, too. And would the folks that like those numbers want them weekly, bi-weekly, daily?
I would say weekly. I think we can all look at the state DOH site and see, like, sort of what's happening with the daily numbers in Yankton. I don't, I don't know, Nathan, is that a Vera? I don't know that we're at a point where we need to know daily hospitalization numbers. But I would defer to Nathan on that. I feel like once a week at this point is adequate.
Once a week is fine by me.
Okay, I will direct staff accordingly. I'll work with Liz Healy at the hospital and determine when is best for her. So it may or may not be Mondays. That works well for us, but we'll see what works well for them, since we're dependent on them for that number. I don't have any other business for the commission. If you have any questions for Mayor or for staff, I'm happy to answer them. No.
So I did receive a photo over the weekend from the Riverboat Days Parade with a beautiful Huether Family Water Center behind it. I don't know if you guys can see this when I go over here.
That looks like, that looks like two Riverboat Day princesses if I ever saw them.
So I thought I should share that. That was, it's a great photo.
Yes, Mayor Moser and I had fun, well, I had fun in the, in the parade, and we didn't have anything, we didn't have candy or anything to toss out, but people tossed out a lot of, actually, a lot of good positive comments. So that was, it was fun. Thank you to Bill Jensen, who's a member of our Parks and Rec Department, the Department of Fun, who drove us in his galaxy, red galaxy, and we kind of thought he should take us for ice cream or something after, because it's such a cool car. But thanks, Mason. Appreciate that.
Well, I'm not even sure how to follow that up. Okay, any questions for the, any other questions for the city manager at this time? All right, moving on from cool red cars to public appearances. If there's anybody in the public that would like to address the commission on something not on the agenda, I would invite you to the podium. All right, seeing no movements, we will move on to the consent agenda items. Number one is establishing September 13, 2021, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events on sale liquor license for one day, which is September 25, 2021, from Ben's Brewing Company at 222 West Third Street and Zombie's Realm, East Third Street, Yankton, South Dakota. Number two is establishing September 13, 2021, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events on sale liquor license for one day, September 25, from Ben's Brewing, as associated with the Kramer Canyon Heritage House at 509 Pine Street. And number three is establishing September 13, 2021, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events on sale liquor license for one day, October 9, 2021, from Ben's Brewing Company in association with the NFIA at 800 Archery Lane. That's the location. And number four, establish September 13, 2021, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License for July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2022, for Backspace Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Backspace Brewing Company, Chris Allington Partner, and that is at 200 Walnut Street, Suite 103, here in Yankton. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All, any other discussion as tied to consent agenda? Anybody in the public want to address the commission? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, number three is old business. So number one is consideration of memorandum 21-182, which is a second reading and a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1054, which are amendments to the City of Yankton zoning ordinance number 711, which are the proposed amendments. If approved, would add medical cannabis dispensaries to the list of permitted principal uses in certain zoning districts. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion?
Just want to say again that I'm really proud of the approach our staff and our commission has taken to this issue. As I look around the state, I don't feel like all cities have been as reasonable and just trying to carry out the will of the people as we have here. So I just, I think we've done a really good job of that. So my kudos to all of you.
Yes, a lot of work has went into this to get us to where we're at right now. All right, seeing no other discussion from the commission, is there anybody in the public that would like to address the commission on this? All right, Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 21-186 regarding consideration of memorandum 21-57 and resolution 21-26 for the request by the Meridian District for a special events parking ordinance to be in place during the farmer's market each Saturday from May 1, 2021, to October 30, 2021. And this is in reference to what City Manager Leon shared in her update. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the commission?
So Amy, you referenced a parking complaint. What was the complaint?
My understanding is that there was a parked car in the north section of that parking lot, and the officer responding was unclear regarding whether or not that was part of the event or not. We looked back. We didn't have a map because we didn't receive a map. So we went based on what we thought was the correct location, based on a hand-drawn map from the previous year, so going back to 20, maybe even 2019. So we've changed our process a little bit. We're going to make sure that our maps are, if provided for by the coordinator of the event, we're going to make sure we have a, our GIS department help us out to make it a little more clear for everyone involved, because at the time, the officer has to make a call as to whether or not it's in or out. It's good to have clarity.
All right, makes sense to have that there. For easier understanding, any other discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? All right, Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business, number one is consideration of memorandum 21-179 in support of resolution 21-67, setting the 2021 Yankton road tax rate. The proposed agenda item in front of the commission tonight is with no increase, leaving that set at an established 50 cents per foot. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Nobody wants to discuss leaving everything as is? I like it. Anybody in the public like to address the commission? I'm seeing a head shake. No. All right, Al, roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-180 regarding the closeout of cold-applied plastic pavement marking project. This is to Traffic Solutions, Inc., for $49,413.91, which is actually $403.49 below the original bid. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Sorry, just real quick. At the tail end of this, it says we're issuing a manual check in the amount of 29,535. So that is a remaining balance with this vendor. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
Any other discussion? All right, Al, roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three under new business is introduction in a first reading to establish September 13, 2021, as the second reading and ordinance to appropriate monies for defraying the necessary expenses and liabilities of the City of Yankton, South Dakota, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022, and providing for the levy of annual taxes for all funds created by the ordinance within the said city. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced.
Thank you. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-181 and resolution 21-68 regarding a request by the Yankton High School for a special events parking ordinance to be in place during the Yankton High School homecoming parade. This is for 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Friday, September 24, and they're looking at closing Third Street from Cedar to Capitol. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, ah, awesome, two seconds. We have a motion in two seconds. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-184 regarding a request by Mount Marty University for a street closure during home football games for the 2021 season. This is for an event, or I guess tied to their home football games, called March to the Stadium, and they are looking to close Pine Street from 5th to 19th Street from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the commission?
So we have, go ahead, Mason.
Say, was that from 5th or 15th to 19th?
15th to 19th. Maybe I didn't enunciate. I apologize.
And as part of our process, all the property owners along the route have been notified?
Mount Marty has notified them already.
Any other discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. It's going to be fun hearing all of these events leading up to Yankton having now a home collegiate football team. So fun to see all that come together. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-183 and resolution 21-69 regarding surplus property from the police department. This is for K-9 Reno's Old K-9 Kennel. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Quiet room tonight. Al, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-185 regarding an agreement between RDG and the City of Yankton for our strategic planning session, which is looking at initiatives for 2022 to 2025. I might ask City Manager Leon to kind of walk us through this before I ask for a motion.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. The strategic planning process is something that I brought forward, gosh, now maybe five or, five to seven years ago. And if you all take a look at this strategic planning document that we've been recently using, I think you can see that our investment paid off with that giving us direction. So many of the projects that are laid out there have either been completed or are in the works. You all, with the community's help, have done such a good job in seeing that through, that we need to start looking into the future as to what do we want Yankton to look like in the next four to five years. And in order to do that, I think it's very valuable to have a professional firm help us facilitate that discussion. We've also had a lot of changes in our community and in our world since the time when we first had these discussions. So I think that's even a more valuable time to have. We don't frequently have time to sit together as a staff and as a commission and to just brainstorm and dream and say what if. And so this is what really those two days are. We talked about a two-day facilitated planning session, the first day being with the department heads, and the second day being with Al and myself and Ross and the full commission as a team. There's also a community component, which I've asked for, so that we're also making sure that we get some community input from what it is that folks are talking about and interested in. Prior to embarking on the actual workshop, RDG intends to have some interviews with stakeholders and kind of get the lay of the land. We were a little bit constrained because we had set a specific, a specific date for when we wanted to conduct the strategic planning. I felt that it was important to do that before the first of the year, and also wanted to get it done within this budget year as well. So looking at folks' calendars, we were set on those two dates in October. So we did have a limited response to our RFP. We had two, I think, very different firms, very different approaches that submitted proposals. What I did is I had clean pull three names from the commission out of a hat, and I know a couple of them, but I don't know everyone that was selected. And then I had her query a couple of the department head staff and say, which firm do, what do you like and why? And RDG came back as being the preferred firm for a number of reasons. I'm familiar with RDG. They've worked with the city before, and they've also worked with a lot of communities on their comprehensive planning. So I'm very confident that they can perform this work for us well. Why do we ask that we're having somebody from, you know, paying someone to help us facilitate this? Well, I think a couple of reasons. I think having some professional out-of-town guidance gives some objectivity to it. We certainly have had other experiences with strategic planning, and I facilitated the last one we did, which I really disliked because I couldn't really participate wholeheartedly, because I was managing conversation, making sure everybody was involved, and really, you know, wondering, oh, you know, did they bring ketchup and silverware? And thinking about, and I wasn't really as wholehearted as I wanted to be. So I think this would, you know, also provide for that. So I'm excited about this process. I've always have been, and I'm excited about RDG facilitating this process for us. I think while it is a significant investment, I want to say it's 31,000. I have to go back to the memo here, 30,100. That's a big investment, right? But how big of the investment would we have if we hadn't sat years ago and talked about the water treatment plan, or the aquatic center, or some of the other big things you guys have done as directed by that plan and allowed us to stay focused on because of that plan? If you approve this action tonight, you also, you're approving some home If you approve this action tonight, you also, you're approving some homework for yourself, and that's to start thinking, what's the next big projects? What are the next big ticket things? And how would they be funded in the community? How would they be supported? Where do we want to see our community? That is your, your homework before we start this process. So there, and I really mean that seriously, to spend some time doing that, have conversations with me and, and other folks on our team and, and in the community, so we can get the best outcome for that process. I'll answer any questions as well, Mayor. Thank you. All right, any questions? I see some mics going on. Commissioner Mybaum?
The community survey component, so is the, is city staff putting that together and arranging for people to participate? So that's something that's on essentially your plate?
I think they'll put it together with guidance. They'll, they'll do it for us, but with guidance. You know, I think they're gonna, they'll, Amy, it's going to be confusing because, of course, the lead person on the team with RDG is Amy. So Amy Hossi is, is her name. Amy will talk with me a lot, as well as probably visit with the, with my management team about what types of questions should be asked, and what types of information we're looking for. So I won't physically put it together, but I'll be, you know, helping to coordinate that.
And then what online tools are we going to be using to get responses? Is that something that they also bring to the table?
I don't know what online tools we'll be using. I didn't inquire about that. I presume it will either be something in terms of a web-based survey, like a Survey Monkey. I also think you can utilize Facebook for surveying people. I'm sure they'll accommodate us however we'd like, but I did not make that inquiry. If you have a suggestion, I'm happy to take it.
We need to make sure that folks know that this could also be a contest, so that we get more people who go through the motions. So maybe there's a prize to be won. And so if we need to budget an extra 100 or 200 dollars as part of this.
I don't think we've given cash prizes for things before, but.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, because if we want to make sure we get a maximum amount of people who actually respond to this, if we're using, you know, online tools or whatever, they almost always have some kind of component.
Well, we could certainly seek some kind of incentive for participation.
Maybe we could look at Pool Pass for next year or something like that.
We will discuss it and come back with, with some, you know, I'll talk with, I'm guessing RDG probably also has done this many times, many other communities, they may have some good ideas to bring forward to us as well.
As you pointed out, it is a big price tag, but I think it's worth it. These strategic planning sessions, I've found to be some of the most rewarding and productive meetings we've had, and definitely set the stage for the next year's worth of workload for the Commission and our staff and the community. And I also have been very impressed with my interactions with RDG over the years, so I think they should do a very good job for us.
One way we are incentivized to do things in the school district is that we get to, as teachers, interact with administration. So maybe you could give away something like lunch with Al.
I'm sure everybody would be participating.
We would have lines and lines of people. Yep. All right, any other discussion from the Commission? Otherwise, I would ask what your pleasure is on this agenda item.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, so I'll ask one more time. Is there any other Commission discussion as tied to this? And before I open it up to the public, I would say to city manager Leon, she did a great job facilitating the last time. So while she felt like she wasn't able to do it wholeheartedly for those of us that were in that, in that room, she did a great job. But I'm happy to potentially see it turned over to somebody else. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to make a comment? Okay, Al, roll call.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries.
And for what it's worth, that last time, I had to run and get the ketchup because it wasn't there.
All right, Al is off ketchup duty now officially. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-187 and resolution 21-70 regarding a request by Mojo's Third Street Pizza for a special events parking ordinance to be in place during the abate poker run, which is going to be held on August 28, 2021. Their request is to close Third Street from Douglas to the alley, so you're looking at a half block of a street closure. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this?
Mayor, if I may remind the Commission that at your last meeting, you approved a similar closure for later on that same evening for Boomers. Boomers is having a, I call it a street dance, but I don't, I think I'm the only one left in America that calls it a street dance, a musical event there of some type. And the abate, they're not the same event, but because it's the same area and they're changing over, we need to have, you know, no parking in the morning for the motorcycles, and then it'll turn over. And the two event, they have Enterprises and Boomers, are in communication about that, so there's no conflict there.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions from the Commission? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Moving on to other business, which there is nothing on the agenda for other business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personal matters.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Anybody abstaining? All right, motion carries. We will move into executive session.